Good evening, everyone. I call this January 23rd meeting of the Albemarle County School Board to order. Our first order of business is to identify ourselves. So, Mr. Black, will you please start?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Josiah Black, School Division Council.
Erin Stone, Assistant School Division Council.
Allison Spillman, At-Large Representative.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville Representative.
Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall Representative.
Kaye Acuff, Jack Jewett Representative.
Judy Lee, Rivanna Representative.
Graham Page Miller, Representative.
Daphne Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Matthew Hawes, Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Pat McLaughlin, Assistant Superintendent.
Margaret Lee Weston, Albemarle High School.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Board.
First, her name is...
Thank you. Now, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We will now pause for a moment of silence before we get going. We now need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I move we approve tonight's agenda.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item of business is announcements. I think we have something from Mr. Page.
You go first.
Good evening, Chair Acuff and School Board members. We would like to ask that the Albemarle County School Board issue a proclamation in honor of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. National Holiday on this past Monday, January 20th. And presenting the proclamation this evening is Mr. Page.
Thank you. The proclamation is celebrating Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Whereas just a century after the Emancipation Proclamation in 1963, Dr. King and Allied forces marched on Washington and delivered the revered "I Have a Dream" speech advocating for the end of racial segregation and societal inequalities. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and other civil rights leaders devoted their lives to the expansion of civil rights and public service to all Americans. And whereas in honoring his legacy, Martin Luther King Jr. Day is the only federal holiday designated as a national day of service to encourage all Americans to volunteer to improve their communities. And whereas Albemarle County Public Schools' mission is working together as a team, we will end the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities for our children's success through high-quality teaching and learning for all. We seek to build relationships with families and communities to ensure that every student succeeds. We will know every student. Albemarle County Public Schools values are centered around equity, excellence, family and community, and wellness. And now therefore be proclaimed that Albemarle County Public Schools do hereby honor and celebrate January 20th, 2025, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day and encourage our employees and residents to work toward his vision for a more equitable and inclusive society. Signed this 23rd day of January 2025, Catherine L. Acuff, School Board Chair, Albemarle County Public Schools. Chair Acuff, I move that the board accept this recommendation.
Second.
Motion moved by Mr. Page, seconded by Ms. Spillman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Page.
Dr. Acuff, due to the weather this past Monday, Woodbrook Elementary School has rescheduled its annual Martin Luther King Jr. Walk to Saturday, February 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon on the Woodbrook track. And participants will have an opportunity to walk and record miles for a cause of their choice and engage in a poster-making contest, enjoy hot cocoa and tasty treats, and socialize with members of the community. So, we encourage the community to come out and join us for that event.
Let's hope the temperature is above 20, right?
Yes.
And then, I believe Margaret has a statement.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. On behalf of the student representatives and Western Albemarle High School, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today to share some updates and concerns from the student body. First, racism and discrimination continues to be a critical issue across all schools, with the prevalence of derogatory and hateful remarks becoming increasingly common post-election results. Although the atmosphere slightly varies among schools, it is imperative that we continue to strive towards fostering inclusive and diverse learning environments for students. In order to uplift cultural diversity, Western Albemarle High School is in the process of planning our second Better Together Cultural Celebration Night in April. The event will intermingle the uniquely distinct identities of various affinity groups, such as YAPIC, the Young Asian American and Pacific Islanders of Charlottesville, Alianza Hispanica, Moca Woca, and the Gay Student Alliance through interactive cultural activities, games, food, and music. Additionally, we are employing initiatives in order to combat discrimination in schools. Students from Western Student Senate Division are collaborating on projects such as disrupting hate initiatives, planning to incorporate anti-racism workshops into potential professional development days for teachers, and advising faculty on how to respond to acts of discrimination in classrooms. We plan to further collaborate with large student organizations such as WAAS Leadership and WAAS Athletic Department in order to increase student participation and engagement for these causes. At Albemarle High School, similar work is being done to increase cultural awareness and uplift marginalized communities. Albemarle's chapter of YAPIC is hosting their annual Lunar New Year celebration, preparing foods from various Asian cultures for their student body, both increasing student unity, engagement, and collaboration. We are grateful for the Board's continued support as we strive towards creating more equitable, diverse, and inclusive environments for all students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. I just want to take a moment to share some information with the Albemarle County School Board. I want to thank you for this opportunity to address an important topic on the minds of many in our community. Recent inquiries about the potential impact of immigration enforcement activities on our schools have prompted timely discussions and preparations within our leadership team and the school board. And I just want to update you. Above all else, I want to assure our students and their families that our schools are and will remain a safe and welcoming place for all. Albemarle County Public Schools does not, and may not, and will not, ask students or families about their immigration status. Furthermore, all student education records are private and protected by the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, commonly known as FERPA. These records will not be shared with any government agency unless presented with a valid warrant or judicial subpoena. We understand the concern about immigration officials potentially appearing at our schools. Recently, I was asked about the role of our school resource officers. I want to be clear that students or their family members will not be questioned, detained, or taken into custody on ACPS premises except when a law enforcement officer presents a valid warrant or an arrest on criminal charges. Even in those rare circumstances, and we've had no inquiries to date, I would say that, our protocol requires school-based leaders to notify the School Division Council, who will manage all interactions with law enforcement, and presently does that. We recognize that school bus stops are an extension of our schools and play a critical role in providing students with access to education. Following federal policies guidance, school bus stops, like school campuses, have long been considered sensitive locations. Immigration enforcement actions at these locations have been strongly discouraged. Recent changes to immigration enforcement policies have eliminated previous guidelines that restricted immigration officers from making arrests at sensitive locations, such as schools and churches. These changes could potentially allow officers to conduct enforcement activities in these locations. It is still important to note, however, that such actions are all subject to legal protocols, including the need for a warrant in certain circumstances. FERPA, which protects student educational records, remains in effect and should continue to safeguard private student information, again, unless specific exceptions apply under the law. We will do everything we can to ensure that public schools and associated spaces remain safe and secure for students and families. We encourage any family concerned about immigration enforcement at or near schools or school bus stops to contact us or trusted community partners. We aim to provide support, information, and resources to ensure all students can safely travel to and from school and attend school in peace. To further support our schools and families, our Office of Community Engagement has distributed written materials outlining these protocols and resources available to families who feel they may be facing immigration-related challenges. We're also fortunate to work closely with a network of community partners to ensure families have access to the support they need. While none of us can predict the future, we remain committed to our core values of equity, excellence, community, and well-being. We stand ready to protect and support all students, staff, and families to the fullest extent of our abilities. Thank you for your continued trust and collaboration as we navigate this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hawes. Is there any other School Board or Superintendent business? With that, then, we move to the public participation part of our agenda. We have two categories. One is public comment for issues not related to the appointment of a RIO interim board member, and the other is a public hearing. Ms. Thompson, what does it look like?
We have no for public comment on other matters, and we have seven for the public hearing.
Okay, so we have seven members signed up, and Ms. Spillman will be managing public comment.
We welcome public input at our School Board meetings. To sign up to speak during the public comment period, you can do so in several ways. Online signup is available from 9:00 a.m. on the Monday of the meeting week until 2:00 p.m. on the meeting day. By phone, call the School Board Clerk's office at 434-972-4055 to sign up until 2:00 p.m. on the meeting day. Thank you. In-person signup at the meeting is available from 6:00 p.m. until the public comment period for in-person meetings only. Please note that the public comment is not received at special board meetings unless specified on the agenda. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, but the chair, with board consent, may reduce this to two minutes should there be more than 14 speakers. The maximum number of people or groups that may speak in a meeting is 20. In the event that there are more than 20 people or groups who wish to speak at a particular meeting, each speaker will be assigned a number, and numbers will be drawn to determine which people or groups will have the opportunity to speak. Those who do not have the opportunity to speak at a particular meeting may sign up to speak at a subsequent meeting and/or may submit written comments for the School Board's consideration. Speakers should state their name, address, and voting district, address comments to the School Board, limit comments to School Board governance or School Division operations, provide written statements and supporting materials to the clerk. The School Board will use a timer to track each speaker's time. Once the time is up, speakers will be asked to wrap up their comments.
Okay, we will begin with Michael Powers in the Rivanna District. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Powers, I'm going to have you hold out for just a second. We have one for public comment. I hope I get your name right. Keith Cobreia, thank you, from the RIO, speaking about JR ROTC. Thank you.
Apologies, I can't follow directions.
No worries. We got you.
If you bear with me, I just have my comments written down. Good evening. My name is Keith Cobreia. I live at 1330 Breckridge Court, and I'm in the RIO District. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak with you today. I'm here not just as a parent, but as an advocate for a program that has had immense positive impact on the lives of numerous students, our junior ROTC program. As many of you are aware, the decision was made to terminate the junior ROTC program at Monticello in November of this year, and we are deeply concerned by this choice. We understand that every decision made by the School Board at this level is done with careful thought and consideration, but I strongly urge you to reconsider this decision as the benefits of this program are far-reaching, not just for our students, but for our community as well. The junior ROTC program does more than teach students about military service. It instills leadership, fosters discipline, and provides exposure to career paths that students wouldn't otherwise have a chance to explore. Unlike other extracurricular activities, junior ROTC offers students the opportunity to gain real-world experience and mentorship, which directly translate to their future success. Take, for example, my daughter. Through her participation in junior ROTC, she was awarded a four-year ROTC scholarship and also received two nominations to the United States Military Academy at West Point, one from Senator Warner and another from Congressman Good. She may not have decided to pursue military service in any form had she not had the exposure she was able to get through the junior ROTC program at Monticello. These life-changing opportunities were made possible through the mentorship, preparation, and resources provided by this program, and my daughter's story is not unique. There are many other students in the community that would benefit from this program, and we urge you to continue the program here in Albemarle County. We are aware that one of the reasons for the program's termination was low participation. However, the assessment fails to take into account that the program was opened right at the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic. Numerous other educational programs faced enrollment issues, and this one was no different, especially due to the virtual nature caused by the pandemic. Furthermore, the program's participation rate has already doubled this year with the inclusion of freshmen, which is an encouraging sign of growth that should not be overlooked and was only changed somewhat recently. Additionally, after researching other junior ROTC programs nationwide, we discovered that there is a contractual requirement for a 12-month notice before termination. The closure of the program in November raises concerns that this notice period may not have been adhered to, and if this is the case, it would only be fair to extend the program for at least one more year to ensure compliance and allow students the proper time to adjust to the transition. I ask you to consider the transformative effect of junior ROTC has had on our students. I would also encourage you to look at the size and scope of the measurable impact, full tuition, job security, that this program is able to offer versus any other program available in the county. We believe that this program's value far exceeds any challenges it has faced, and we know that there are many other families in the community that feel the same way. Again, I urge you to extend your support for the junior ROTC program, reinstate it for at least one more year to allow enrollment numbers to continue to rise and to allow other students to benefit from the same opportunities as our daughter. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, Mr. Michael Powers, Rivanna School Board Appointment.
As an ROTC graduate, I'd like to thank the previous commenter for his thoughts and also would like to support JR ROTC in our school. I think it enhances diversity in our schools and is a valuable program. My name is Michael Powers. As you said, I'm a parent of two Monticello High School graduates and also, of course, an Albemarle County taxpayer. I'd like to first offer my condolences to the family, friends, and colleagues of Chuck Pace, and I'm sorry to be here tonight under unfortunate circumstances. I never met Mr. Pace, but one thing I respect him for is his participation in the democratic process. He put himself forward and got actual voters, real people in this community, to get off their couch and say, "I support you, and I want you to represent me." And as all of you know, that's not an easy thing to accomplish. As elected Board members, each of you have done the same thing, stepping forward to earn actual votes from real voters. Dr. Acuff, you earned 2,900 votes in your initial election in 2013. Dr. Berlin, 4,400 last year. I'm rounding these to the nearest 100. Ms. Lee, 3,800 in 2019. Mr. Page, 2,400 in 2015. And Ms. Osborne, 4,300 in 2019. And Ms. Spillman, you earned 25,000 in your recent at-large election. If we average that among six magisterial districts, that might be the equivalent of 4,200 votes for a district seat. And again, I commend each of you for standing forward to uphold democracy in your own elections. Today, you have the opportunity to uphold democracy again by appointing Jim Dillonbeck, who, just like each of you, earned about 4,000 votes, 4,069 to be exact, just three months ago from Albemarle County voters, who wanted him to represent them in the exact position you will fill tonight. I read a quote by Mr. Dillonbeck in yesterday's Seaview Weekly that said, "His appointment would give vote, voice, to those voters and honor the democracy that we all hold so dear." And that sounds about right to me. We need to include everyone by showing those folks that their votes matter. I observe that Mr. Dillonbeck is also unique among your applicants because he has already done the work of engaging with the community, something that several applicants last week talked about as an important goal or aspiration. As part of his campaign, a few months, just a few months ago, he knocked on doors and talked one-on-one with hundreds of RIO District residents. With only a short time remaining in this partial term, he won't have to begin from scratch the process of talking to community members to come up to speed. He has already done this and will be able to hit the ground running. In other circumstances, it might be difficult to choose among the excellent applicants you heard from last week, but only one applicant tonight has been pre-qualified for this exact position by the endorsement of thousands of RIO voters. Thank you for doing your part to keep our democracy strong by appointing Jim Dillonbeck.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrew Cox, also from the Rivanna District.
Hello? Andrew Cox? Am I supposed to say my address, I suppose?
Magisterial District is fine.
Great. I'm from Pantops. I have two children in Albemarle County Schools, one at Monticello High School. And by the way, one of them has an IEP, and I wanted to give a shout-out to the Monticello High School folks. He's gotten a lot of really good and robust support over the... He's a freshman, and just being a freshman, you need support. But he's gotten even more than that. So, in addition to thinking about my children, I also think about all the other children in Albemarle County School. And one of the things that I've been impressed with about Jim Dillonbeck is that he has done a dive into the data. Where, where does the data show that we need help? Where does the data show that work needs to be done? And one of the things that I've noticed, as I've also looked at that data, is that the most underprivileged students in Albemarle County, they are still struggling. That is a state of affairs that existed before this Board, before this administration, and it continues. And one of the things that I would like to see is that those disparities, those differences, close. And so, that is a reason that I support Jim Dillonbeck to be appointed to this Board. In addition to Mr. Powers, one of the things that I will note about Mr. Dillonbeck is that he did receive a very large number of votes. It was nearly 50% of the vote. And he has also been a teacher. So, in addition to understanding all of the detailed data about where additional work is needed in the school district, he also knows from personal experience. And so, for those reasons, I hope that you appoint Jim Dillonbeck to this position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Beth McDonald from the RIO District.
Hello. Actually...
You can pull that down.
Yeah. Actually, my name's Beth McDowell, and I live at 1985 River Inn Lane, and I'm in the RIO District. And I'm here to highly recommend Jim Dillonbeck to be appointed to the open position on the School Board. I've known him for about nine years, and I've seen him work with the youth in our church and doing projects, and he's just very diligent and faithful. And I want to reiterate again that he is the only applicant that has actually taught in Albemarle County Schools. He taught for seven years at Albemarle High School, and his children went to Albemarle High School. So, he can... I think he brings a perspective of understanding of teachers, what the teachers need, what students need, and what the parents need, and I think that'll just be an asset that he can bring to the School Board. I know he's also, as I said before, he's the only applicant that actually campaigned for this position, and he did win 47% of the vote, which is more than 4,000 votes. And so, a lot of people in RIO District would like him to be on this Board, I believe. And anyway, I just highly recommend him. He's very... Has good character. He's a family man and just is a hard worker, and I believe he'll work hard for the Albemarle County Schools to keep giving the excellent education that our youth need in our community in this time. And I just ask for your consideration of voting for Jim Dillonbeck. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Rydell Payne.
Good evening. My name is Rydell Payne, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to support Jim Dillonbeck. I have known him since 1985. In between semesters of college, I was at JMU. He was here at UVA. We met then, and he graduated. I graduated. He got married, worked in Lynchburg. He worked in the county here, as you know, and then went off to Seattle for three years, then back here and working for Northwest Mutual and has stayed there for, I don't know, maybe 20 years. So, he can correct me on that later. I will say just a little bit about myself. I have... I'm from Flavana, a county boy in Flavana, and worked for the city of Charlottesville, worked for Butternut Ministries, a nonprofit, and currently work for Pacham, an overnight shelter, as a case manager. So, Jim Dillonbeck, I want to share with you that he is always the same, whether he's come back from Seattle, Lynchburg, or wherever, JMU or UVA. Jim Dillonbeck, when you approach him or when he approaches you, he's a curious person. He asks questions, and he wants to know that, you know, the questions that he asks, they are sincere, and he listens to people, and he follows up with things that people are concerned about. So, he's curious, and he's a collaborator. He works well with people, whether it's at his church, whether it's at his current job at Northwest Mutual. I had the joys of being with him on a journey of awesomeness biking challenge that we did, and he worked very well with guys for about 10 years to do that and raised about a million and a half dollars. And so, Jim cares. He cares for his family, as you've heard, cares for his staff, his coworkers, his congregation, his clients. And he cared enough, as others have mentioned, to run for this position. And as has been mentioned already, 4,000 people cared enough to vote for him. So, I hope you find in your hearts and mind and within your process to select him as the candidate. So, thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you very much. Next, we have JJ Maxwell from the Jewett District.
Thanks for having me. I'm JT Maxwell. I live at 432 Woodlands Road. You'll be surprised that I'm here for Jim Dillonbeck, and I'll speak mostly to his personal character, having known him for over 25 years, having known him since he was a teacher at Albemarle County and a coach. I've worked with Jim, both as a colleague and professionally here in Charlottesville. I've been here for over 35 years, and you will not find, for you all who are going to choose a colleague to work with, you won't find anybody more trustworthy to work with, and you all have to work together for the betterment of our community and the kids that are going through and the investment that we all put in the schools. So, having known Jim for well over 25 years, I just want to speak to his character and how well he will work as a team player, both with the staff and with the elected officials. He's shown his commitment by now standing up here for, unfortunately, due to the circumstances, now the third time in a year, to be able to offer his services, and you'd do very well to bring him in as a colleague. So, good luck tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And finally, we have Ms. Victoria Lee.
My name is Victoria Lee, and I would like to tell you why I believe Leslie Pryor would be a great member of the Albemarle County School Board representing the Rio District. By way of introduction, I have lived in the Charlottesville-Albemarle area since 2005. Both my children graduated from UVA, my son being an Eckles Scholar. Each was valedictorian of their graduating class at what was then known as Washington Lee High School in Arlington, now Washington Liberty. I myself returned to school in my early 30s to complete my BA at Georgetown University and then stayed on to complete my master's there. Although I went back primarily so that I could have better conversations with my Phi Beta Kappa husband, I guess you could say I value education very highly. I have known Leslie for more than two years. Initially, we worked together at the Family Treatment Court, where we worked closely with Region 10 and CASA to help families recover from addictions and reunite children with their parents. Leslie was my supervisor, and we became good, solid friends. Leslie was born and raised in Charlottesville and is a graduate of Charlottesville High School and Virginia State University, where she majored in sociology. She is an Army Reserve Officer and an ROTC graduate. She is currently working on her master's degree at UVA in public safety. She has served in numerous professional areas, working with youth and their families, including as basketball coach, assisting scout troops, and as a tutor. Leslie has always been an advocate of quality education for all. I know her also to be a very active leader in her church, who gives countless hours in the service of others, delivering meals to the homebound, serving as an unpaid elections official, and teaching the Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program, which she has done for more than 20 years. Her work ethic is second to none. Leslie is currently Alumni Coordinator and Program Associate for the Sorenson Institute at UVA. While our working relationship has ended, Leslie remains one of my true friends. I hold in the highest regard. She is a woman of high standards and integrity. I unequivocally give Leslie Pryor my highest recommendation for the Albemarle County School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Philbin. The next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Ms. Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion's passed. Just by way of explanation to those in the audience, we are now going to go into a closed session where we can discuss the appointment of the interim Rio delegate. But in addition, we have a couple of other items of business. So who has that motion?
I do.
Oh, sorry, right here beside me.
I do.
Dr. Berlin.
I move that the school board of Albemarle County, Virginia, go into closed meeting as authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, under subsection 1, for the discussion and consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment and the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body to represent the Rio Magisterial District for the remainder of the 2025 calendar year. And subsection 8, for the consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the school board regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. The purpose of this item is to discuss the application of school board policies on admission in student organizations.
Second.
It was moved by Dr. Berlin, seconded by Ms. Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're in closed session. On the schedule, we have about 45 minutes. At that time, we will come back in and have some motions.
I still haven't quite figured it out.
She's literally took a leave of absence in protest.
Way to have some influence.
Right, yeah. But it's a march, it's an ongoing march.
Well, yeah, the shield. This January 23 meeting of the Elmore County School Board is back in session. Do we have a motion out of closed meeting?
We have certification. That's a motion. We do chair. I move that the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have moved by Dr. Berlin, seconded by Ms. Lee. Ms. Thompson, can you please do a roll call vote?
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Philman?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Chair Acuff?
Yes. The Virginia Code provides that the school board may appoint an interim school board member upon a vacancy. This school board has decided to make an appointment for the Rio District to fill the seat left vacant with the passing of our colleague Chuck Pace. This was not an easy decision. We had seven community members with impressive backgrounds, knowledge, experience, and perspectives, willing to tackle what I consider one of the most important work local government does, and that is working to support our public schools. The school board has both reviewed their applications and last week interviewed each during a special school board meeting. It is gratifying that we had seven individuals who are willing to commit to this important public service, and we thank each of